Going to call the meeting to order at 5:35. I see Caitlin, is Chris there too? Or just Caitlin?
Don't see Chris. So you have carried there, carried there all in the corner. This is smaller, carry ten, need Caitlin, affect you.
Okay. All right. So we have a forum. No, we have four, four members here. So let's do the pledge and our pledge tonight. My pledge.
Yes, it's America and in the middle of the world stands one nation under God and men which is well, liberty and justice.
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
Adjustments to the agenda.
Just that, um, Deb Cardane was going to be here for AC to talk about test assessments. We had to go home and deal with a family matter. So it's unable to be here. So if you can move that or like, we can still have a discussion, but.
Let's postpone that to the next meeting if numbers are agreeable to that.
So may I ask what assessments exactly we're going to be caring about?
I think we were going to hear about the MAPS testing and, you know, where we're doing with that because that's been going on. And then we can also, we're also look at the new assessments. So she can tell us a little bit about the new one that's coming on.
Oh, the one that's going to require some
crossover.
Adjustment from our students.
Yeah, I think, I think also just talking about a greater overall, what we're looking at doing with data, what the schools are looking, how we're getting data to inform instruction. And stuff like that. So there was a little bit more than just. One thing, but.
A little update and a little advanced stuff from what we did before.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. I'd like to move exact session to after the accepting the donation. It's new business with the principal valuations and add a contract issue there. And that will take me, you're going to suffer after that. I'm looking to try to keep the meeting to an hour. Absolute max of an hour and a half will stop at that point, no matter what. Okay. But an hour would be good. So we'll try to do that. I know I'm seeing my board members asking for that one hour. So we'll try to do that. Anything else that needs adjustment? Okay. If not communications and public comments. I'm not seeing any hands from in the room or on the screen. Five review and approve minutes. We still do not have December 5th.
We.
Mr. Ha, so if you can get that for us for the next one. So yeah, I know.
I'll check it down.
But we'll put it on you to make sure we have it for the next meeting. January 17th. Any corrections?
I don't have any corrections. It's just that the this, this complete free. But the, the, all of the principles reports were done from BAVM into the minutes. And it just seems to me that's not what the minutes are intended to be.
Right.
But anyway, I don't have any, I don't have any corrections or anything. I'm just saying, I think the minutes are the, you know, reduced in size and, you know, summarized or something that the principal reports were, were, were fair and accepted and that type of thing.
Right. Maybe just attach those if they want extra information in there, but maybe just doing more of a summary. I know, I think tonight the principals are going to do just a very much briefer summary of it anyway. So that will help. So we will accept the minutes of January 17th.
Seventeenth. It's about my director's comment. Just a clarification that that was in regards to the Christmas decorations that were in the lobby with the dolls falls and bills.
I'll just add a note. My, um, my first name is misspelled. Not a big deal. It's always a Y or I, but just as a correction.
On the first page, Caitlin?
Yep. Yep. That's right.
Can I see it?
C is the correct, is it C or K?
Yeah, but there's a I instead of an I.
Yeah.
C A I T L.
Okay.
I am.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So we got that corrected as well. Okay. So then we'll accept the minutes as corrected for January 17th, January 27th. Under recommendation of articles read within volume outs for articles two through seven, if it's two through seven, we have to add nine hundred and twenty nine thousand nine hundred and thirty five to a reserve fund for capital improvements and authorized void to expend funds because that was number seven. To make that correct. And then there was a discussion regarding all of them and Mr. K being motioned. Which was okay. And we'll accept those January 27th minutes as corrected. Reports finance. Jim, you're up.
So this, uh, this gives you a little look at where we are now. And I'm kind of looking at over the next five months. We've got five months left. So where are we going to be? And I just wanted to go down on a couple of items. I'm looking on page three. And you'll see on lines 11, 13 and 14, there's some substitute salaries. And I just want to say right now, those salaries are collecting in the SU. And they'll be brought over at the end of the year. But I didn't want anyone to miss that. I mean, that's a cost that will be shifted. So I put that in there. It doesn't, it, right now, if you download the, the expense, that doesn't show up. So I just wanted to point that out. On page, I think it's five. You'll see the tuition for privates for the preschool, the pre-K.
Which line?
Uh, that is line 99. And, and I will say right now it shows an over expenditure of a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand. But there is going to be one more payment to preschool. And so chances are it'll, it'll be in that hundred and fifty category or more. And um, okay, on page six, and I, I just want to point out to you, um, so even though we are paying for some of the athletics in, in the 1501, right now, the athletics for 2023 was zero. It wasn't budgeted at all. But, and I just want to, I mean, there's, there's going to be a cost to that, that, that we'll have to true up to. I, I will point out, I mean, this, this is where I think it's always easy to think you're going to have extra money. And if you look at line, line 249, page nine. And although we budgeted a thousand dollars, and this is for a 504 student, we could have the potential to expend more than that. And this is where I, I just, you know, it's, it's tough to track some of those expenses because some students move into a district and you don't know who they're, who's coming in. I have. Yeah. Have we noticed an uptick in the need for speech therapists over the past year?
I, I mean, many of our students that tends to be an area of disability, um, we've had, as students are moving off of an IED, they may still need some speech intervention. So they moved to a 504. I think also it's just kind of been saying in my memory certain, we had a student move back into the district who needed specific services. So that wasn't something we were anticipating, but the student moved back into the district.
Okay. But among the younger grade students, say first, second grade, there hasn't been increased need for the service among our established student.
I, I have to get back to you with a, with a, a solid number and.
I'm just curious if there was a trend and uptick because the restrictions in school, the closure of school.
Yeah. I can get that information from Ms. Alexander to get to you. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we are seeing, we are seeing an increase in students being referred to special education for a variety of reasons.
Sure you are.
And a lot of the speech comes out of the special end budget. So it comes out of WN issue. Question for you, Jim, on that 249, is that supposed to be 100,000 or is it 1,000 that was budgeted?
That's 1,000.
Okay. Well, it shows more that was used up there.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm looking at page 11 now. And I'm looking at lines 339 down to 345. And as you can see that, I mean, some of the stuff that was expended was not budgeted, but again, balancing it out in total. Hopefully the audit won't drive much more than, than we've expended now. So but we're at roughly a hundred and thirty, excuse me, 30,000. Uh, let's see the last 10. I'll, I'll just say, you know, again, this is a tricky one, but the oil, the buildings, and I'm looking at page 15. But I, I, this is a hard one. And know where you're going to be because I don't want to leave the tanks on that clipper. And, and I'm not sure where we are. But we're, our, our payout is four bucks a gallon. So, uh, this was a cold weekend. I'm sure we consumed a number of gallons. So overall, and, and the bonds we've fully encumbered now for the expenditures. And so if you look at page 16.
Jim, I have a question.
Yes.
On the page 12. We we've got rentals, rentals, land buildings.
Yes.
The five, four, four, one. Is what?
Thank you for picking that up because I didn't know what it was either. But I did find out. So what's listed as equipment, which is, you know, 400 down. Now that is the prior copier. I don't know if it was copier agreement. Anyways, this was with all, all something. And so anyways, what happened was this did not get paid last year. Twenty-two. So we kind of worked something out to, to bring us even. And that's the equipment monies. What shows in the, um, the five, four, four, one, which is rentals, land, buildings, is the current copier cost regent. So that's just a monthly. Yeah.
So this is the co, uh, bill from 2022 wasn't.
Correct. Yep.
And that actually goes back before that because they have an issue with their building during COVID and didn't bill us and then sent a bill and Jim worked it out. Worked it magic and got a penny on the dollar if anything.
So page 16 gives you the bottom line. And I will say, so it looks like we're a hundred thousand maybe to the good for our expenditures. Now, that's not bad considering this. You negotiated a contract for your teachers and support staff. So I can only say, I wish I had been responsible for this, but I wasn't. It's, I think, I mean, it's, it's miraculous that you came that close to balancing out. So.
Well, we did, we did. We, we did some budgeting. Uh, we didn't, uh, so specifically did not work with contingencies into the 23 budget.
Yeah.
Right.
And so we in some positions, we didn't believe we were going to show as a placeholder for.
You, you must have counted very close in total with, with what positions and stuff.
We were really careful with what we were doing with budget, but.
Yeah. Well, excuse me, Mr. Keith. Well, hey, you did okay.
Except for one missed, yeah. Which could have thrown us way off, but it hasn't so far. I hope it doesn't by the end of the year.
So a hundred thousand on the expenditure side and on page 17, I've got the revenue side. And again, the only, the only issue in the revenue side is the tuitions from Westminster and Athens, Rattan. And so we're, we're about two, two eighty eight short on the tuition side. And all in all, you know, so, so we're, we could be, could be 200,000 in, you know, as a gap. But we'll see where we are and we'll have to pay attention as we go forward. We've got five months to play out. And see where we end up.
So the two, the two eighty eight is you think of finding the number.
Yes. Yes. That, that's. And again, I just want to tell you, um, so Westminster's been billed and we've got the invoice. We're folding that up from going through because we want to make sure cash wise that Westminster has the cash available to them. But that's, those are the real numbers.
And that's, I think it's going to end the year. Yep.
So five months to go. Pray for, pray for a warm spring.
Something for the weekend.
Hopefully they ensure the temperatures, they got thermostat's down a little heat and they hope.
Down.
Yeah. Sixty-four.
So at, at least if we can have that cool weather on the weekend, we're better off. Are there any other questions for Jim?
Yes. Just the question, what's, what do we pay substitutes in?
Hundred. Twenty? One twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, one, one, one twenty something.
All right. Principal straightforward. Uh, let's start with, you were the first one on my, on my sheet there. So.
Um, well, I sent a full report to Nicole today. So I'm just going to highlight a few of these to save us some time here.
Just a couple.
Yeah. Our, our student council, which is made up of our seventh and eighth grade students, um, there's about a dozen of them in the student council. Just donated socks to our place here in town. And there's a really nice article written up in the reformer. Um, our, one of my seventh graders, I should say, our seventh grade social studies teacher, Chris Kelly heads up that, that student council and he's, uh, there's some exceptional students in the school who work really hard to do various things, uh, within the community. Um, they're the ones that did with the, uh, um, different, um, care packages for troops and stuff there a couple of months ago, right around, uh, Veterans Day and up until the, the, uh, Christmas holiday and stuff like that. So, um, that's one real highlight here for, for us is, uh, our student council there. Um, we also wrapped up MAPS testing last week for the winter session. We saw a really big up stick in schools, which is, um, huge. I mean, as a, and we're a little bit pretty happy, pretty happy with that and the students and their, and their, and their gains there. We sent home progress reports for the second trimester, which is, which is good news because last Tuesday was halfway through the school year already, which is crazy. So um, progress reports went home already, um, yeah, on Friday with, with kids there for the second trimester. And then, uh, the last one I highlighted, I'll do is our, our winter sports. Um, our girls' basketball team won again today, 11 and O, and both teams competed in the keen tournament over the weekend, which they play some larger schools from New Hampshire. Um, and I told, promised the girls that I would show this. Uh, so they, the girls took home the championship. So. Really proud of it. Um, and they worked hard. They spent two and a half hours there watching the games on Saturday. I'm glad they did. It was cold outside, but it was warm in the gym. So. Wonder. It was good. So, um, and our boys actually played the same tournament there and our six teams, um, were finished third.
That's great for them too.
Right there.
Okay.
Question, these are.
Any questions for Henry?
I was curious about the, um, the MAP testing and the gains you've seen there. Did you see anything, like, do you have any ideas of what might have supported that or anything that has been implemented that would be helpful?
Well, um, I know in the past, just from my teaching experiences, I mean, the fall is always thought to get that summer loss there. Um, so I think just being into a routine and being in the building and working with the teachers and staff and, you know, on a daily basis, I think that that definitely, uh, led to a majority of it. But I definitely see a lot more, um, let's say, student engagement in the classrooms and stuff. So I think, and I'm hoping we can hold on to that, uh, as the year continues. The back nine of the year. There you go.
Henry, do all students participate in this testing?
Um, yeah, we had all students except for, we had one student who, uh, was opted out by family. But other than that, yeah, all students participate.
Okay.
And special ed students are accommodated.
Absolutely. Yep. 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 They're in separate groups and accommodations are set up for them, um, by, uh, Laura Coonsberry and Stacy Alexander and our special ed career.
Any other questions for Henry? Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, next, uh, we had central. So let's go to Carrie.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Um, so I'll just make it brief as requested. So, uh, we've had some of the MAP testings as well. So we do want to thank everybody we, for doing the DIBELS assessments. Um, and we're almost a complete. We had a few students that were absent. So we're trying to make up some of those. Um, but I really thank the CES team for getting those completed. We will have our data meeting next week on the 13th. We're going to review our scores, make some action plans and then celebrate any growth. It's still a little too soon for us to analyze it all just yet. Um, and then on Thursday last week, sorry, uh, we had Kevin Deering from the, um, Vermont Agency of Education. So he came to visit us to check in on our continuous improvement grant. And so, um, he was checking in while he did some classroom visits. We reviewed the grant, um, and did tell us he, now we are invited to apply for a little bit more funding. So we're looking into some early childhood grant. Opportunities, hopefully we'll see. But I do want to thank Shirley Lynch in the business office and Trish Adams, and then Deb Carden and Andy for all of their work for supporting our continuous improvement grant. And all of the teaching staff for all the great work that they were doing when we did our classroom visits last week. It was great to see the students in action. Any questions or comments?
I, I noticed, uh, Carrie on your, uh, the enrollment numbers, uh, that you listed pre-K at 10 and, uh, we've been, we've been thinking of 16 and that, did something happen in, in the, uh, in the pre-K?
No, actually I believe that is the correct, the 16 should be correct. I believe it's the two different classes. They're, they're, uh, recorded a little bit differently sometimes. So there's a four-year-old class and then there's a three-year-old class.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Yes. We did lose two second grade students though, however, unfortunately.
Right. Could I make the suggestion that since we get pre-K enrollments from the SU that your students, your numbers, because it's a different.
Yeah, it's a different system. Great K. So if you can.
Just leave out.
List give us K through, through four, which are hundred doors and then.
We will do that.
Fully get the pre-K numbers at the WNESU.
Okay.
That's the question. Thank you, Chris. Okay. Any other questions for, for Carrie?
This might just be because I'm newer, so I don't know this, the history of this, but I was curious about the continuous improvement grant and if it's for like a particular focus area. And then I know you said the additional funding was for a few key areas, including early childhood education?
Yes. So Central, uh, before I got there was designated as one of the 15 schools in the state who are in need of, uh, continuous improvement. Um, and so we've been working on that. When we met with the, um, AOE the other day, we were still addressing how to compare previous scores. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, um, there was not some aspect testing and now it's changing. So they're still trying to decide exactly how to, um, designate if we've met any of our goals or not, or whether they will continue us on that list. Um, until they can find an assessment that compares apples to apples. Um, so they're not exactly sure, although he did say he was pleased with what he saw in the classrooms and walking around the things. So, um, we are waiting to hear our designation of whether that will continue or not. And it, it could very well be, right now it does offer some additional grant funding um, that we are using for staffing as well. So we're waiting to hear exactly what it looks like for next school year.
Thank you.
Good question.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your, your comments and all the insights that you give us. Laura?
Sure. Hello, everyone. Um, I'll report out on two bullets as asked. Um, so, uh, on Wednesday, we all have a building-based professional learning time in the afternoon since it's an early release day. And at SRAS, uh, we started the work, um, moving forward with focused schools in our ILT, looking at, uh, evidence-based practices and their impact on student learning. And we're going to continue that work on the, uh, ultimately selecting one to three practices to implement school-wide. And then as Carrie, uh, mentioned, uh, we have our data meeting with Deb Carden and Shelley Wilson. Um, they're going to be at the school on Friday to facilitate grade level meetings, um, and, uh, looking at MAP data, DIBELS data. Swiss, my data as well as attendance data. Um, and, uh, the attendance data will be viewed through Panorama. Taking a peek at that. And, um, I'm looking forward to, um, seeing how they facilitate, uh, data meetings since they're new to our S. So I've been doing it in the past. So it'll be nice to have on the group from the supervisor, you know, implementing facilitation.
Yeah, I was specifically looking at the attendance, um, for all three schools and all three are running right around 90%, which is, which is really, really good after having pandemic and having so many kids out. That's really good. Any questions for Laura?
I feel like I'm on all questions today, but, um, I was wondering too about the evidence-based practices. Are they for like all kinds of areas or are there, are they focused on? Are they for like all kinds of areas, or are there, are they focused on particular areas? It sounds like there's a lot of practices that you'll consider and then focus on a few that align with your focus area.
Yeah, so we're looking through the lens of our targeted learning focus, and the last time we met, we specifically focused on John Hattie's work and, and looked at, you know, different strategies that were associated specifically with comprehension listening, comprehension speaking and writing, and the effect size of those strategies.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, I have some questions. Laura, what is Panorama? You use that in a sentence, what is it?
So Panorama in a one-sentence nutshell, in the help out here, is a, it's like an information system that's new to the SU that houses and we're learning and experimenting with it, but it's a one-stop shopping, which will house our attendance data, behavioral data, and academic data. Instead of pulling from many different sources and many different platforms, it's a one-stop. You can see a student, all of those components at once.
And does Central also have Panorama?
We all do.
Yeah, we all.
Rob, yes.
Rob, yes. How do you spell John Hattie's name? I'm just curious.
H A T T I E.
H A T T I E. All right.
That's just a comment, I'm delighted to see that Deb Carden is working with the school, I think that, obviously, when I heard about the position, and she was here once to talk to us, she's going to be here today, I guess. That's where it really counts, and so I'm very pleased to see that that's happening, and I hope it happens a lot.
It is, and I am thrilled, so beyond the data meetings, she comes to our school once a month to work. We have grade-level team meetings weekly, so each month she'll come and work the grade-level team. She also pushes into classrooms to work directly with teachers. And during our winter sports, I have my classroom teachers staying back, and Deb works with them during that time as well. So she does, she's doing a lot of pushing to the schools, which is fantastic.
Yeah, Deb also just wanted to let you know too, that I'm fortunate enough to spend, she's here a couple of days a week with me, helping out with supervision and evaluation of staff, obviously, being a little bit short-handed and not all that knowledgeable on it yet. She's been working with me side by side, so she's been a great resource and great support here at the middle school, too, and they obviously.
It's really good to hear. Any other questions for our principals? Okay, Esther Projects is the next one on there?
Yeah, just an update, we, we had two bids for the roof up here at the middle school, but unfortunately, I think there was a misunderstanding and the only bid on part of the roof being repaired, so we're going, we'll be going back to those two, those two bidders, asking if they can give us a bid for the whole roof. We've also learned of a new type of membrane that is a forty-five-year membrane, or a forty-year, okay? And so we want to see if that cost is going to, how much of a differential that, because typically the membranes are twenty to twenty-five years, and so if you can get forty years of the membrane, that would be ideal. Just had one contractor out at Central looking at the roof there to give us a price on that, so we're moving on that.
Could we get those two bid on the middle school to bid on the central?
I believe one of them is, and we're going to be going back to the other and asking them, because, because see, you need three bids, and even with two, I mean, one or two, you gotta do a bid waiver, and it's, for that, that, like, that's the biggest hurry-up-and-wait, because it goes up, and I, I think that the poor person who's responsible for big waivers probably got every SUSD, you know, bid waiver, because it takes forever to get them back. And sometimes I pepper, 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 and then it'd be like, oh, I thought I had sent you that, and so then I get it back. So it's, but we're hopeful that we, we just could not get a third bidder to come out. In fact, I think the second bidder, we, we had, they'd come and bid on the high school, and we're like, hey, you want to come look at the middle school? And they're like, okay, yeah, I'll come over there, so it's, we're, we're trying to get that. Ricky is working with, he has a bid out for cameras and doors and the single-door entrances, and so we're supposed to have a demonstration this week about the capacities and some of the things they can do. What that'll do is allow for us to put some type of monitors or screamers on all the exterior doors, so that if the door's propped open, we'll know that a door is propped open.
I'm sorry, this is for the middle school you're talking?
All, all of our buildings, so, so we're doing, you know, and it brings it all into one system. So right now, like, each building's on a different system, and so this will bring it to all capacity to one system. But also install additional cameras in all of our buildings. And then look at our front doors. So here at the, the middle school, with the best view of the way, it's designed already, we don't need to do a big retrofit to it. We can capture a person in that, you come in the first door, you get buzzed in, and you'd be in that second place to get buzzed in again. So, because right now, you only have to get through one buzz door, and then you're into a building, and all of our buildings are designed that way. So we've been looking, we had an architect out at Saxon River two weeks ago-ish, I think, and looking at redesigning the whole, you know, a, like a secondary entrance. Not, not mucking with that, you know, the entrance that's there, but how can we potentially design a secondary entrance after school has started, so that as a person shows up, they can get in that kind of small containment area? So that architect is going to get us three different feasibility, and then we can come back as the building's in ground and talk about, you know, how do we want to proceed? You know, based on just their thoughts of what's the best use of the building. Central, we're looking at reinstalling the doors, so, because those, the door jam and everything is kind of shot, and so that all is in the works of being done. Cooling systems, this building is a challenge, because according to Rick Schuman, we cannot put any more big units up on the roof, otherwise I guess it becomes a three roof. And so we need to look at split units potentially, but then there's a whole aesthetics with split units, and playing those things out. But that's the challenge with cooling here. We are looking at system upgrades for all of our building management systems, and so we're working up to put that out. Again, a lot of that is, some of it's just software plugins that just need to be upgraded to get everybody on the same system. The one, and then HVAC systems, again, each building's a little different and looking at those different components. And then the one that seems to kind of be stalled is the kitchen at Central. Harley was working on getting everybody out there, and then one, we couldn't, we couldn't get any bids on the plumber. And he kept crying, we couldn't even get, he had a plumber out there, and then the guy just, I think, never gave him any bid after constantly trying. So it's a matter of going back to see if we can get a plumber to come in and potentially do the work that he's looking to do. The only other thing to do there, we had one bid on it, is to change up and bring in a general contractor who would do the whole thing. When we originally talked to someone, it was double the cost of what we'd got budgeted, so, so almost five hundred thousand dollars, and we've got, you know, two different budgets for that project, and so Harley, you know, wanted to try and, and thought we could do it together, we talked to the state, and state was fine with us, you know, being essentially our own contractor. Like I say, Harley got everybody in there and just cannot get a bid on the, on the plumber, so.
I'm assuming he looked locally.
Yes, yeah, I mean, he's, yeah, I mean, we may need to expand, that's the, you know, but I mean, the conversations I'm having with, with, with folks, it's like, they got more work than they can put their hands on, and so they're not, you know, like, they're, they're coming back with, I think it's similar to like when I had my house painted. I didn't get a guy out there, he gave me a price of like, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to do my house, and if I want to pay him, he's, he's happy to bring a crew, but it's really only a twenty thousand dollar project. So people are way over, because they, they don't need work, and so.
We're also looking at, the funds only last so long, so.
No, we are well aware of that, I think that's, that's the, been the big, the big piece, and a lot of these things, like roofs and everything, are summer projects. And so we know that, and that's going to impact things, so. There is a ninety-day, just with Esther, we're learning that, right now, unless the federal government changes things, there seems to be this ninety-day lag over, so even though September twenty, twenty twenty-four is the deadline, there seems to be this ninety-day pull-over, you know, so it can extend out to, was that, I don't know, up to the end of December. So if we've got projects in the works, they don't just all of a sudden stop, it goes custom.
We have to have them started.
Yeah. And we haven't heard anything more on it. I know we, we originally had a, we're looking at a clerk of the works or a project manager. Haven't heard anything more on that. But I'll go back to Joe Allen, see if anyone else has applied. You know, one of the thoughts that's gone through my head is the head of maintenance is leaving at the high school. I don't know how we could orchestrate this whole thing, but do we look at not just getting the head of maintenance, but making that some type of a director of operations or facilities for all of our buildings, and adding a little bit more dollars onto that salary, and like, almost like a stipend piece with that person that oversees all of our buildings to help coordinate some of that stuff, but I think that's, you know, we got four districts by, you know, plus the SU, and probably on the wall at the other, and currently the position's out there, it's the director of maintenance of the high school.
Are we fairly close on the amount of dollars that we're looking at as far as spending in that? Or are we really off as far as what we've been able to get approved and?
We're probably going to need to go back and reconfigure a lot of the different large-budgeted items. Like, we originally budgeted two million dollars for roofing projects. You know, the high school alone is a two-million-dollar project, and so, but we were going off numbers that we, we thought were at least trying to grab things, but we're going to need, we're going to need to go back into ARPS and look at potentially reallocating quite a bit of different funds and looking at where do we want to, you know, put those money, so, you know. Like, there's, there's money tied up in a, in a fire system that was not approved originally. The concept was pushed back, and they didn't like something, so we, you know, obviously, we would not do that fire upgrade. You know, the system works, it's not in, it's in a different district's building, the system works fine, but they wanted to upgrade it, so if you take that hundred thousand and apply it to something else, so. That'll be some of the work, and so Shirley Lynch has been doing a fabulous job of cleaning up these just the line items that we'll be pushing out to all board members on Friday, on Fridays, so that they can, you know, see where, what projects we have and where the money's at.
Okay, because we surely don't want to lose any of that money, that's, that's the important thing.
Well, that's, that's part of what we were doing even today, is looking at Esther Two and what we originally allocated, and then how much did we spend or how much are we projecting to spend? Because that, that grant goes away at the end of September of twenty-three, so now can we claw back some dollars so that we can spend in another place right now? So, and so that's what we're, we constantly are doing with, with the Esther grants, and so I, I just say that so that if when board members see like a certain dollar amount that is allocated to a line item, it's, it's much more fluid than, than a normal budget, because some of these things haven't even been approved yet, so we push up concepts and concepts to improve, that's all it's been.
It sounds like we really need to be pushing harder.
Is the state showing any sign of the building pastor or is it creditless?
The state, as I would say, it slowed down, Chris, because they've lost some very key personnel recently, which, and, and I think as Carrie was mentioning, the meeting we had with Kevin from the state. So a gentleman left there that was overseeing, we do licensing, but just the Esther grants, and some other pieces. And so he left, and so then the guy who was working with him took over all of that, but like, so now someone's having to take like and Brad James has, has retired and
He's retired.
And well, and, and they've advertised his position for, I think, seventy little bags, and I, I think they've advertised his position for seventy.
I tell you, it's, it's going to be a wonder if he's
Yes.
Continue that strategy, it's fantastic.
Yeah. But, but, but the salary that they're even, they're even posting is, it's, it's, it's so below like what any business manager even is making. That, I, I, I don't know what they're expecting, so. So if you're looking for a job.
Any questions? Okay. All right, so on new business, we have River Charities donation. Henry, would you like to speak to that quickly?
Yeah, so much like Saxon River, also, the middle school received a donation from River Charities for two thousand dollars to put towards our student activity funds, so I guess I'm just requesting permission to accept the donation.
So we need a motion to accept that donation, much like we did the one for Seth's order.
I assume.
Okay, so Bill just motioned to approve the accepted two thousand donation for the B F M S activities fund from River Charities. How do you vote, Jim? Caitlin?
I.
Okay, so all are in favor of that, so, okay, that's fine, thank you. All right, so the next thing we're going to do is executive session, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at six twenty-three to discuss personnel principal evaluations in a contractual matter where premature public knowledge could place the individuals down or the board at a disadvantage, and invite the administration.
So.
Made that motion to enter into executive session at six twenty-three. Discuss personnel matter and contractual matter where premature public knowledge could place the individual in or out, or to just invite administration. Caitlin, how do you vote?
Yes.
And board members here. So we are out of exec session at seven ten, and we, we were already over an hour and a half into our meeting, so we are looking at principal search update, nurse update, the test assessments had to be next time because Deb wasn't here, and the Rockingham Board Goals, I'm just going to pass out a copy of the Rockingham Board Goals, and we will look at those things at our, our next meeting. So we'll go to directors' comments. Jim?
Yeah, the, recently, the Billy and Brown's Committee from the SU toured all of the buildings in our supervisory unit. And I would just like to compliment Rick Schuman and all of the custodians in, in the Rockingham School Department. in, in the Rockingham School Department for the condition of our buildings. I think that they they show the kind of work and, and, and update and and attention to detail that I know we all want. And I was, I was just very pleased to see the condition of our buildings. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Jim, Bill?
I just wish all the staff and students a good holiday break this coming week or so. All presidents, that's that. We have school this week and next week, so it's in two weeks. In two weeks, well, we won't see each other in two weeks. So now is an opportunity time. Hope everybody gets the best. And should, and try to say that.
Chris?
I would like to thank all of our principals for their service to the district. And also I'd say that the way the principal reports were done tonight, I got a lot more out of them by just having a couple of items and a little bit more in-depth question. You guys asked a little bit of questions. That really worked. Oh, for me, I thought, I, I learned more about what they were doing. Kind of like focusing down.
Thank you. Caitlin?
Yeah, I echo what Chris said. Just thank you to all the principals and the administration. I think the, the work that I've been doing in the past several years has been on science of reading trainings for teachers and implementing research-aligned literacy curricula. So it's really exciting to see it happening in our SU and to see that it's being embraced. I know it can be like a really big shift if it's not something that folks have been teaching before. And it seems like everyone is really embracing, looking at the data and figuring out what to do and what they can do to make their experience and the experience of our students better. So just wanted to say I'm really excited to see that and really excited to hear more about it from everyone.
Thank you, Caitlin. Yes, I really appreciated their reports tonight and the way that they were handled. It made it easier to ask questions and, and key on the important items. Our principals, we really appreciate, as you've noted, and it kind of took all the things I was going to say and kind of each one of you gave something that was very valuable in your director's comments.
Next time you go first.
Pardon?
Next time you go first.
No, I go last. Thank you. So just, just continue being kind to each other, every one of you, our parents to students and staff and our administration, because they are working really, really hard to provide a good school for your children to attend. Thank you. Our next meeting is February 20th, 2023 at 5:30. Who wants to be then? And without opposition, I'll adjourn at 7:15.